This is a city commission meeting. Could we have the roll call, please?
Smith.
Here.
Clute.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Mayor Robish.
Present. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I would take a... I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda unless there's something that I missed that the commission can pick up.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call and vote, please.
Ben.
Aye.
Clute.
Aye.
Craig.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Mayor Robish.
Aye. Moving on to public forum. Public forum is limited to a maximum of three minutes per person. Please state your name and address for the record. Do we have anyone here for public forum tonight? I have... I have a couple of proclamations here that I would like to do first, and then we have another one in the audience also. We have with us tonight a host from the Heron Area Senior Center. And so I'd like to paraphrase this first one just a little bit. September is National Senior Center Month, and it's a time for us to recognize and honor the Heron Area Senior Center for its work with older adults and their immense influence on every facet of American society. And the senior center in our town is very active, and they're very... What I can... What I see from the senior center is the Meals on Wheels, because I know a lot of people that get meals on wheels. And it's a very, very good program for older people in this town that don't have the means to go and get their own meals. But it's... It's very good food. It's very good for those older people to get that and whatever. And I appreciate that. And for the younger people of this town to look at the senior center and take that advice, that's great knowledge that the senior center is flowing through to our younger generations. So I want to thank them for that. They are here. I have a proclamation for them. I'll give that to them in just a bit. But speaking of the senior center, we have our... What am I trying to say here? Our... What's the name of your organization?
People's Transit.
People's Transit, okay. I'm thinking of the senior center, okay? Not the same, but they do service them a lot. And so with the People's Transit servicing the senior center and vice versa, I have tonight with us, we have with us tonight, a very distinguished guest has been working there for over 25 years. And yes, she's here. And no, she didn't know about this, but Anila Spoor is here. And I would like Gail Clute to come forward and Anila to come forward. And Anila's gonna... Gail's gonna present this to Anila for her years of service. As part of the People's Transit bus, maybe your picture will get on the next bus. Thank you very much for your committed service. And thank you, Gail, for...
Do you want your board chair with you, Andrea?
Sure, yeah.
You can bring whoever you would like.
Yeah, she's got the camera, but yeah, I just wanna... Are you gonna get a video? Okay.
You can go down and get them. Look pretty down there.
It's an Anila Spoor day.
Ready?
Yeah.
One, two, three.
Okay, one, two, three.
You got way slow.
I don't, because I've taken multiple pictures.
Congratulations.
Always start smiling on one.
Why don't you do the one or two senior center? Do a picture of that one, too. Gail. Gail.
What? Yeah, hey, Jane, you're on the board at the senior center as well, so come on up here.
Come on, hey.
Little lady. What?
You need a prescription.
Hey, you're on the board. Right? On the board, baby. Hold the mayor's hand.
Ready? One, two, three.
I just stole.
What was that?
Ryan, you wanted to be you. Thanks a lot.
Yes, yes. I'm blushing.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
More for public forum tonight. I have invited Brandon Whip, our new state senator. Is that correct? To come forward. And I've known Brandon, I guess, all his life, because I know his dad better than I know Brandon. But I'd like him to come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself. And he just came from the Baylor, so as soon as we're done here, he's going back to the Baylor, so.
Yeah, that's why I'll start by apologizing for my appearance, but I think most of everybody came from their day jobs. Hopefully you were able to stay a little cleaner than me. But my name is Brandon Whip. I live up at 40396 South Shore Road, okay? Have a farm about 30 miles north of town, farm with my parents. And then I live with my wife up at Lake Byron there. So here on address, sadly, I have not had the opportunity, though, to vote for any of you, but boy, I would have.
He's a politician.
Yeah, so the mayor offered this opportunity, and then I did give a copy of my resume. This is exactly what I furnished to the governor's office. It just explains a few of the things that I've done, mainly in the agriculture space, that I think, I don't know, qualified me to at least put my name in. And I was very fortunate to... Very fortunate to get the job representing all of you there in the State House. So about 15 years ago, I started doing some state agricultural policy things with the South Dakota Soybean Association. I did some youth leadership, or some young leader development programs through their... Through their organization. And after three years there, I was fortunate to move up to the national level, that organization, the American Soybean Association. I've been on their board of directors now for the last seven and a half years. So mainly, I focused on federal agricultural policy, but I'm a quick study, and I know that I'm gonna have a lot of... A lot of things to pick up on that many other people deal with, you know, as I represent them in peer. Couple of the special responsibilities that I had while... Or that I have had while on that American Soybean Association board. The main one I'll point to is I ran their trade show for four years. It's one of the only things that our association does that actually makes money. When I took it over, they were making a little money. I was fortunate during the time I was there, we had just come out of the COVID pandemic, so you can imagine running a trade show. You know, right after that time was very interesting, but full of opportunities. And we probably made about five times more money by the time I was done running that than we did when I took over. And we went from about 6,800 attendees to 12,000, my final year there. So I'm very proud of that. And really, what that did is it meant pulling together a number of different political organizations, the soybean growers, corn growers, different commodity groups, and then different industry groups. I was interfacing directly with John Deere Corporate. High-level executive people, basically trying to figure out, how can we provide value to each of these different stakeholders, all at the same time with the same event? And so that was a really beneficial experience for me and something that I hope to take as I represent all of you. Other than that, you know, I know I've got a lot to learn. I'm not one of these people that thinks they know it all. And so I'm always gonna be willing to talk and to hear about what the concerns you guys have are and what your needs are from government at the state level. Are there any... Are you allowed to take questions quick? You know, does anybody have any for me? Is that allowed?
If anybody has anything to add or ask him or whatever. Brandon married a...
You gave us your phone number.
Is it not on there?
No, it is. I said you gave us your phone number.
Oh, okay, 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 good.
Brandon married a local gal from town here.
Yeah.
And so they're born and raised here, so.
Yeah, and I never thought, well, at least at this point in my life, that I would get into politics. I kind of thought this was something for maybe 10, 20 years later, when I was getting closer to maybe retiring at the farm. But I think it's important to have younger people in those conversations as well, just to make sure that young people don't get, you know, alienated by government, and they want to stay involved. So they see themselves being represented there. And I think that's beneficial for all of us. So I'm grateful to pull this opportunity forward in my life by maybe a couple decades, and I think it's gonna be a fun challenge.
Brandon did beat me in the pie eating contest at the fair, too.
Yes.
Yes.
Third place, probably, roughly, so.
Good job.
It was a good showing. I'm no Roger Chase.
Yeah. Thank you, Brandon.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm gonna get back to Bailing, so.
Okay.
Thanks, enjoy your evening.
Thank you, Brandon.
Yep.
Okay, I think Commissioner Clute has one more thing for public forum.
I do. I just want to remind the community and everyone to attend the Chamber Mixer tomorrow night here in Public Library, 521 Dakota Avenue South, from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m.
Thank you very much. Moving on to consent agenda. Matters appearing on the consent agenda are expected to be non-controversial and will be acted upon by the commission at one time without discussion unless a member of the commission requests an opportunity to address any given item. Items removed from the consent agenda will be discussed at the beginning of the formal items. Tonight's consent agenda consists of 4.1 minutes of August 25th and minutes of September 4th, 4.2 field quotes for city departments, 4.3 personnel items. And here's another one of these that we had, like in our proclamation. Accept the voluntary retirement of Mark Luckhurst, water sewer treatment one effective September 19th. And Mark has worked for the city for 17-plus years and is to be commended of for his service. And I personally want to say thank you to Mark for this. If you're a supervisor or you own a business and you have an employee that works for you that never asks for anything, always does his job, and is committed, it's Mark Luckhurst. So I will... Hats off to him. Number two, post internally and advertise for a water sewer treatment uncertified position. Approve the wage correction for Isabel Gilbert, seasonal lifeguard. And number four, approve the seasonal employment of Braylon Hood for Central Park maintenance. 4.4, set September 15th as a public hearing date to consider street vacation petition submitted by HMMI. And 4.5, payment of the bills.
Move to approve consent.
Second.
Roll call and vote, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Clute. Aye.
Craig.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Mayor Robish.
Aye. Bid quote items, 5.1, consider pay request number two. The final request from Amusement Restoration Companies LLC for bid number 2025-3 Spa Central Water Feature and Green Water Slide Restoration in the amount of $34,250. Like it says, it's the final pay request for the restoration.
Move to approve. Second.
Any questions? I see we have Chad Schroeder here, Parks and Rec Director. Pretty self-explanatory.
Chad checked it all over after they finished up.
It's all good.
Good. Okay, roll call and vote, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Clute. Aye.
Craig.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Mayor Robish.
Aye. Moving on to petitions and communications. 6.1 is our annual review of open law meetings and open meeting laws. With us tonight, we have our legal counsel, Aaron Shively, on with us on the Zoom. So I would let him explain this. We go through this... We need to go through this each year, correct?
That's correct, Mayor. Thank you very much, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay?
Just a second here. We're adjusting. If you keep talking, we'll just keep adjusting.
Okay, can you hear me better now?
It's coming.
How about now? Any better now?
No. Why don't you start your spiel and... Okay.
Okay, we'll give it a go. And if at any point you have trouble hearing me, you let me go. Let me know. And I'm, first of all, just wanna... Just give a little bit of background. At this last legislative session earlier this year, the legislature passed a new bill, a new requirement to go over these open meeting laws each year and have that noted in your minutes. So this will fulfill that requirement for this year. Going forward, I would recommend calendaring the same discussion basically at the first meeting after, you know, your official meeting come, you know, July timeframe, just to get you on kind of an annual meeting cycle. But I think it's a good opportunity for us, since we're a little bit new in the engagement here, for me to just go over a few things. In your packet, you should have a copy of the Attorney General's, you know, multi-page kind of synopsis of the open meeting laws. I'm not gonna read everything there. I'll take most of it as read, but there are a few items that I do want to highlight. Most of you, I think, are very well-versed and familiar with open meetings laws, having served already on the commission. And I would say, in my experience, you and your staff is doing... Are doing an excellent job of adhering to the open meetings laws and requirements. And so you're to be commended for that, and I don't have any specific issues to raise in that regard. What I do want to do is I do want to just highlight a few things to just think about as we go forward. You know, one of the questions that often comes up in annual meetings or in open meetings contexts is, you know, who is responsible for adhering to open meetings requirements in terms of city boards, commissions, et cetera? Obviously, you as the commission are subject to the open meetings laws because you're the primary body that executes the sovereignty, if you will, of the city. But to some extent, you know, if you're delegating authority for certain types of activities to other, you know, boards or commissions, task forces, I would encourage you to think about whether that may create an opportunity where they would need to notice a public meeting as well. And in that circumstance, I would just recommend that we have a conversation about whether or not we need to post that meeting. For a lot of your boards, commissions, you're not going to need to, because they don't really exercise, you know, sovereignty of the city, so to speak. And then they're just making recommendations. But in some instances, for example, the Parks and Rec Board has certain statutory authority. If you're, you know, using that authority in some way, you may want to consider whether or not we need to notice that as a public meeting. I would just encourage you, if ever in doubt, just notice it as a public meeting. It's always safer than getting referred to the open meetings commission. I think most of you are pretty well aware that the requirement to notice a public meeting is, for me to spell it, is 24 hours in advance. There are some exceptions for that in an emergency situation, but in general, 24 hours in advance. Again, you and your staff do a very nice job of that. No concerns there. We just got done with public comment period. Again, public comment period is required for any public meeting. You can put reasonable restrictions on that. I think, again, you do a nice job with that. Just want to make sure you keep that up and certainly would encourage you to continue doing that. From time to time, including tonight, you know, we talked about executive session. Executive session is allowed, but it has to be done pursuant to specific types of activities. Obviously, personnel issues, you know, there's a performance of discipline of a student. That's not really applicable to you. That would be applicable to, obviously, the school board. Consulting with me or reviewing communications from me about litigation or contractual matters, and that's what we have on the agenda for tonight. That's perfectly acceptable. Employee contract negotiations are also subject to executive session. You know, public... Marketing pricing strategies of publicly owned competitive businesses, and then information related to public safety. Those are the main issues. There are some others that sometimes can also be invoked, but those are the main ones we'll concern ourselves with. Just please note that executive session is at the discretion of the governing body. You're not required to go into executive session to consult with me. I may, you know, strongly suggest that you do so, but at the end of the day, you're my client, and you're gonna do what you're gonna do. So obviously, there are certain circumstances where it's to your advantage to do executive session. But again, it's at your discretion. From time to time, with some of my other municipal clients, the issue comes up on the agenda and what can be added to or moved around on the agenda, and when does that have to happen? You have to notice your meeting 24 hours in advance, but you actually formally adopt the agenda at your meeting. And at that meeting, you can move items up and down on the agenda if you choose. And you can also add or remove items from the agenda. It would not be, however, best practice to do that. My strong recommendation would be, you know, don't add things at the time of the meeting. Try to get everything on that agenda 24 hours in advance. Just make sure that you're, to the extent you can, really respecting that public notice requirement, even though as a legal matter, you know, you could add things. And from time to time, there may be a reason to do that, and we can talk about that when it comes up. The last thing that I'm gonna talk about that I think is particularly important, this is a new clarification that the legislature enacted this year. You know, from time to time in the past, and I think, you know, to be expected, there, you know, can be communications that are sent by a text message or email that include, you know, all or a quorum of the commission. And the legislature's now made clear through a bill that was passed that those communications, if they have a quorum of the commission, are considered open meetings, and they have to be noticed. So the bottom line is, and my recommendation to you is, don't text each other with a quorum of the commission. Don't email each other with a quorum of the commission to talk about, you know, some issue that's facing the city or some street that needs attention. All of that would be considered now an open meetings violation, because you're having a policy discussion via electronic, you know, format. You can still have communications sent out for purely logistical purposes. You know, is everybody available to meet in a special meeting on, you know, September 15th at 4:00 in the afternoon? That's okay. But once you get into, you know, this is why I think we should discuss the street on September 15th at the public meeting, that's not okay. So just remember to keep that in mind as we go forward. I think arguably, it was always potentially a violation of the open meetings law. The legislature has just been very clear now that it is. Beyond that, again, I don't see a whole lot of issues that have come up. I think you do a nice job on this, and you can now consider your legal requirement under statute to be fulfilled for the year. Any questions on that?
I don't, I guess. Does anybody have any questions?
I just, for clarity, a couple of things.
Yeah, Commissioner Smith is gonna ask you.
So Aaron, the 24-hour notice, that's clock hours? So if our general meeting is 5:30, the agenda would have to be posted online or in the lobby by 5:30 Sunday night? Would that be accurate?
That's correct, although as a functional matter, you guys are always publicly noticing your meetings by, I think, Thursday or Friday, right?
Correct, yeah.
So you don't have any issues there. Now, you could... If you needed to adjust the agenda, you could, and then somebody could come in and repost that. But yeah, it's 24 hours, not business hours.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know.
The state works a little differently, but municipalities are different.
I didn't know if that was lobby hours or how that was calculated, so. And then as far as communication internally, is it permissible then for me to send an email to another commissioner or the mayor individually concerning city business? Or is that clarified now?
No, absolutely. You're well within your rights to send an email to another commissioner, text message to another commissioner, to the mayor. You know, the intent here is not to stifle any communication whatsoever on public issues. It's just to prevent a quorum of the commission or a quorum of the body from essentially deciding what needs to happen before the meeting, so that the public can't benefit from seeing the discussion and debate.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have anything? Yeah, go ahead. Commissioner Brad?
So you said emails can be sent as long as they're informational to everybody? So just, I mean, you used that example of a meeting coming up, but we do have that occasionally where we're not having a discussion, but we're just sending out, here's an informational piece. And I know there was some question with the change in the law, if that now needed to be sent to just two at a time, but you're saying if it's just informational, that can be sent to everybody?
So if you're coordinating logistics for a meeting, that can go to everyone, okay? As a matter of, I would say, best practice, if you're generating an email communication, and I don't mean an automatic one. I know you have a board portal that sends out your links to your packet, which is, I think, I can make a good argument that's different. But let's say, for example, that, you know, not to pick on Paul Lynn, but Paul Lynn sends out a, you know, white paper to everybody on the commission at the same time, including the mayor. I would encourage you to maybe rethink that approach, because now what you're doing is you're inviting a discussion about that particular matter with everybody on the commission at the same time. And so while it is more work to send out, I would say a substantive, like, white paper to a couple at a time, if it's outside of your automatic board packet, I would think about that and not necessarily do it. If you're just coordinating meeting times on September 15th, that can go to everybody. But it's when you start getting into what would invite a policy discussion, and you can't control, you know, who says what back and who sees what. You know, so for example, if the white paper goes out and then Commissioner Smith replies all and says, well, I think that this is ridiculous, and this is what I think we should do, you know, that's what the law is intended to not have happen. It's a little bit awkward, but I think we can all understand why the legislature would have some concern about that kind of thing happening.
That would be on point with my response most of the time.
And then one other point of clarification, because I know it has come up, but as far as how we're noticing, when we have, you know, Commissioner Clute just mentioned the Chamber Mixer. There's a high likelihood that we will have a quorum at that Chamber Mixer. So before, the policy has always been, don't hang out together and don't have policy discussions at that, but you could all be present at that without it being an issue. But I think now we're making an attempt to actually publicly notice all those. Is that something you feel, you know, that is that a change based on the most recent law? Because that's gonna be some extra work, and I know that's the process we're taking.
Yeah, so I think what you're doing now, that notice of quorum is a best practice. I have to go back and look at the statute specifically, but I believe that the wording there is permissive. It says you may provide a notice of quorum, not shall. And certainly, the Chamber Mixer wouldn't be nearly as much fun if all of you weren't there. So we don't want to prevent you guys from going and doing the people's business. So a notice of quorum, I think, is appropriate. I think there's some level of discretion as to whether you need to do that for, you know, and certainly, if you all went to the same church on Sunday, I don't think you need to put a notice of quorum for church on Sunday. But, you know, if you're gonna go to something where there's likely to be a public discussion of, you know, priorities, some public discussion of things that need to happen in the city, that, to me, feels like a good opportunity for a notice of quorum. If it's something that's maybe purely, you know, ceremonial or kind of a fun event, you know...
High school football game.
High school football game, or except for, well, this last Friday wasn't very fun for me, since it doesn't be here.
I was gonna say, especially against beer.
But, you know, if it's a ceremonial type of thing, if it's a, you know, fundraiser for the United Way, that's probably not something that I would say you need to go out of your way to notice a quorum on, because the chances of you having some sort of discussion about, you know, what streets need paving is pretty low, right? You're there for a different reason. So I think, you know, use your judgment. If there's a question or concern, I would encourage any one of you, or Paul Lynn, or whoever, to reach out to me, and we can work through that. But the notice of quorum process you're using now, I think, is a good one. It's good to be thinking about those issues.
Thank you.
I think that's a very good explanation there. Thank you there, Mr. Shively. I think that's a very good explanation there. Thank you there, Mr. Shively.
My pleasure.
Okay. We're going to move on to ordinances and resolutions. First reading of ordinance twenty-two seventy-five dash thirty dash two forty-eight, our annual appropriations, and set the second reading for September twenty-nine. Turn this over to the finance director, Pauline Perry.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Not a lot of change, actually none really from last week. I'm just going to run through the memo and then just let you know that we viewed the property tax numbers with the Google County Auditor. We gained one hundred and fifty-three dollars. So that number increased by one hundred and fifty-three dollars. So our total increase there is now two hundred and fifty thousand nine twelve oh eight. Again, CPI is two point nine, state stats that one point one eight percent is our new growth, which is a great, great number. First and second penny are both budgeted flat at four point nine million, no increase. Third penny the same. Salaries at this time, we did talk now and they've started negotiations on the salaries. Two percent is included in the wages, in the step. The two percent step is also in there. And that is included in the numbers that you see in the ordinance. Work comp will increase three percent. Our modifier is actually lower, but as our wages go up, then you see that number go up to the cost of the work comp. Property and liability, again, liability is at ten, or excuse me, two percent, equipment and property at ten percent. And this will be our second year of bringing our building values up. So that is included in this number, an estimate of it. Capital assets, I can bring a new sheet because that has not changed for the last two, three weeks. I'm just going to give you the total because you have all the numbers. Total for capital assets requested by the city is six million fifteen thousand one ninety. Again, that number has not changed in the last two weeks for sure. All the outside budgets were recommended and approved or recommended by the capital or what we're calling the Finance Committee, reviewing financials and looking at the numbers. Those numbers are included. Enterprise funds, we got the initial rate study last week and I looked at that. Water is approximately four and a half percent, sewer is four point two percent for next year. Solid waste, reviewed that. We had three percent, we're making it five percent. That includes to allow us to have money to go into the reserves because of the debt service there. It doubled the amount. We went from like one twenty-seven to like two fifty-eight in solid waste. So that's where we're at now with rates. This is a preliminary rate study on the water and sewer. But I mean, I guess it's pretty close. So what you see in your packet then is an actual copy of the budget, the actual ordinance. Total budget, total expenses is forty million eight seventy-nine, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That's the first page that shows it by general fund. Total general fund budget is sixteen million eight fifty-seven, six thirteen. I did include the balance budget. I know there's still more discussions out there on some different things. So to balance that, I threw that amount positive into contingency. So if there's anything that comes up, those things can be made up through the contingency funds. And that makes us then have a zero balance for a balance budget in the general fund. Special revenue funds include Barkin Rec, Splash Central, Bed, Board and Booze, Community Campus, nine one one, the Event Center, TIFs. And the second penny is eleven million one sixty-three oh twenty-nine. Our debt service is six hundred and fifteen thousand six hundred. That's the special debt service, sales tax fund, that is actually solid waste, but backed by sales tax revenue. Solid waste makes that payment. Enterprise, water, sewer, airport, golf and solid waste total is twelve million two forty-three, three seventeen, which makes up your forty million eight seventy-nine, five fifty-nine. The next page following that, you can see I'm not going to go through every single one because it is, if you go across the top where it says appropriations, that's the total expenses by fund. And then underneath that is how we pay for that. You can see we have the general fund across and the special revenue funds, as well as debt service and all the enterprise funds. So budget was difficult as always. And I appreciate the hard work you guys put in and the late nights. And I ask for approval on the first reading of the twenty twenty-six annual appropriations.
So move.
Second. Any questions? You going through this quickly or?
I would just add that the contingencies this last year have been running much higher. So, you know, that's a good fit to increase that contingency amount because we have, we've just seen things are more expensive and there's been more things cropping up that were unexpected. So I think that was a good a good decision to increase that.
Good point. Anyone else? We have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Clute.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Mayor Robish.
Aye. I would now entertain a motion to go into executive session under S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two, parent three, for contractual.
Move to approve executive session in S D C L one dash twenty-five dash two, three, contractual matter.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Clute.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.